Be happy. Starting to get the... Really smile. That's a good one, Dan.
What?
Reading that. Casey, you went to Northeastern.
Okay, so we're gonna open the meeting at seven oh eight, call it. The meeting is with the BOS, the zoning board, and the planning board. The request is to go over the up-and-coming possible bylaw changes. The zoning board has done their due diligence with some possible recommendations on what they've done in their work. I know they had put a couple zoning board members in charge of doing the changes, of going through the changes that were proposed. They're gonna present their possible, well, I shouldn't say changes, but their possible recommendations. So, I will, at this point, hand it over to the chairman of that board. And I know the planning board is here as well, will hear from what they have to say, and I know you guys have the ultimate decision on it, but this is what I think we need to do, and we'll hear what they got to say at this point.
Okay, thank you, Bill. The zoning board of appeals was given the task of reviewing the proposed zoning bylaw changes. And we met the second week in June.
Yeah.
And Dan, myself, Casey, and Kathy Franzen. And through the discussions, it became quite obvious that there was a couple people that had a lot more experience dealing with zoning than myself and Dan. So Kathy Franzen, who is a commercial real estate broker, and Casey Bailey, who actually has a master's degree from Florida State in urban planning, and also a law degree from Northeastern School of Law, and actually works in the land court. graciously agreed to review and make recommendations. Casey's gonna speak on that behalf, and we'll take it from there. Go ahead, Casey.
Just to clarify, I don't work for the land court.
I'm sorry. No, no, at, yeah, at land court, excuse me.
I am a real estate and land use attorney in Boston. And the approach that Kathy and I wanted to take was really one to try to clarify and bring the proposed bylaw a little closer to what the current bylaw states as, in terms of regulations. We fully understand the...
Yeah, can you just a little louder?
Sure. Fully understand the need to revise the bylaw and to make structural changes, as well as bring the bylaws up to date with the current needs of the town. So that's sort of where our recommendations are coming from. It was really an intent to clarify and to raise questions where we thought things were unclear or needed further revision. And I don't know if the board wants to, I think walking through this issue by issue might be a little cumbersome for all of us, but I kinda wanna just hit on some of the main things that we tried to do. And I did spend a lot of time with the definitions section. There were a number of new definitions introduced, as well as many, most of the older definitions remain in place. In a lot of instances, these were contradictory or duplicative. And so we tried to kind of narrow down which definition fit best and eliminate those unnecessary definitions that were not used anywhere else in the bylaw. There were also several instances where the regulations themselves were contained within the definition. And, you know, best practices are not to regulate within the definitions section, but really to truly define terms in the definitions section and regulate later on in the bylaw. Things, for example, like lot width and lot frontage, imposed regulations instead of really defining them. One issue, moving on from the definitions section.
Could you give maybe like one example?
Of which?
Of definitions that were duplicate and are ambiguous.
Sure, let's see.
Just give us the page number and what you're talking about.
Sure. On page two, there's two definitions, amusement indoor and amusement outdoor. They were then later defined on page five as new definitions, commercial recreational indoor and commercial recreational outdoor. The contents of what was included are similar. There is a definition for dog kennel, and then a definition for, and that's on page six. For, I believe it was, commercial kennel.
So, Casey?
Kennel commercial is what it is.
Are these similar, but not the same?
They were definitions that were similar enough so that one would be confused to know which definition really, you know, if you're defining a bowling alley, it's both amusement indoor and commercial recreational indoor. And then regulating those two things differently, or regulating one and not mentioning the other, somebody who wanted to bring in a bowling alley may not understand what's required. So, the intent was to, and in many cases, the new definition was a much better definition. In some cases, I thought the older definition was a little clearer. I added also to the very bottom of section two, and for your copy, the text that's in green is text that I inserted. To note that words that have common meanings have their common meanings, even if they're not defined in the bylaw. I didn't edit this, but I thought there were a lot of definitions that really did have a common meaning that didn't need to be defined, and that by imposing a definition, you're almost interjecting a little bit of unclarity. For example, a golf course, I think most people know what a golf course would entail. This definition, oh, I guess I did leave it in that I deleted it. So, a golf course is a facility or grounds over which golf is played. That could mean anywhere, it could be somebody who has quite a large yard who likes to hit golf balls in their backyard. You know, by interjecting that definition, there almost is more lack of clarity.
Ambiguous.
Yeah. Did you have any more questions?
No, I just wanted, for the board and the BOS to just get a little bit of idea.
Sure. And then we move into section three, which defines the zoning districts. And I think that one of the things that you typically see in a zoning bylaw is the purpose of each zoning district. And this gets to the next section, which is the table of uses. It's a little bit difficult to state or determine what uses are permitted in any given zoning district when there isn't a definition of what the purpose of the district is. For the most part, one could understand the difference between an industrial district and a residential district or a business district. But we do have a limited business district, which is a very small district. It's unclear from just reading this bylaw why it's there or in what uses would necessarily be appropriate. We have the table of uses, so obviously a person...
The old town hall, the old town hall, that's why. That was a stipulation in order to sell the old town hall.
It had to be listed as a limited business district.
The woman that bought it had a basket reading business. Guess what? Never showed up to apartments, now it's three.
Yeah, I know where it is, I live across the street.
That's why it was put in, in order just to sell that one building years ago.
But what Casey, what you're saying, it doesn't show up so that the average person reading that knows where it is, what's it for, and what's the application?
And maybe at a future date, it should be rezoned, but that's, I don't think, a question for this bylaw.
Well, but, but, but I think, Casey, I think we gotta, we gotta impress that it was our understanding, since I've been on the board, that all the changes that were gonna be made in this zoning bylaws were going to be of a housekeeping type of thing.
Right, and so rezoning would not be appropriate at this time.
That's right, so what you've done, you've identified some housekeeping issues.
Well, I think it's, while it would be a change from the current bylaw, since there currently isn't a section of the current bylaw that describes the purpose of each district, it's sort of a basic of planning and zoning to know why you designated one district as distinct from another. So, I don't know that it would be inappropriate, and if it can't be accomplished at this point, it's something that should be taken into consideration at a future point.
Where would that information come from normally? If you were to work on a town, say, developing a zoning ordinance, where would those definitions come from, where would it derive from?
I think what you're getting at is that typically, this is a process that would be community-driven, where the, either led by the planning board or, you know, we don't have a planning department, but we're consulted to gather information from the town or lead charrettes to, for people to come and express their opinion as to how they see their community developing and what uses are appropriate where. Ideally, that's where that information would be generated from.
Did that.
Would it be in a master plan?
For example, a master plan.
What's the date of it?
Never lettered for, 2000. Half of it's done.
Well, and maybe at this point is when it could be updated.
Does it have definitions and purposes for each district? Does it have a kind of a general guideline in what people in the community want and...
Yes, we sent out a survey, and meanwhile, those people are in their seventies now. But, and you got a younger generation now, so the whole outlook of that survey is probably null and void. But we had acronyms, and we had the survey done on what their outlook was and everything else. And we had a good response. This is a long time, this was in the nineties.
The state requires that comprehensive plan be done every ten years.
While we try.
Best practices are, you know, twenty years is a typical comprehensive plan timeframe, so...
All the towns I've worked in, there's always ten, but, and I think in forty-eight, whenever I read, it said ten years.
In general.
In general, yeah. So, what, I think Dan was, Dan's alluding to, and what I've had said all along, we've got, some of these things are pretty substantial changes, and where's the comprehensive plan to back it?
Be done in conjunction with a master plan, and if that master plan just got stalled or backburnered for some reason, can that be resurrected and brought forward and, and make, you know, it seems like they're running on two tracks, and to do this and do this once and do it right, we need those purposes, we also need to respect what the people in the community want, and if you did the survey, maybe we need to do an updated survey.
A lot of what you see in this use is, I mean, it's kind of like a combination of what's here now, what we used to have is gone, okay? And where we're headed, okay?
What do you have there in your hands here, what is that?
This is something me and a building inspector updated, did you get a copy of this?
Is that the matrix, so-called matrix?
This is a new copy of it.
Oh, no.
What's the date of it?
I didn't put a date on this thing, but basically, we made more permitted uses in the LBD C zones, okay, business, commercial, industrial zone. It's just simply we went down through it. Initially, what the lawyers wanted us to do is come out with something very simple. No one would have a problem with it, so we picked professional businesses. No one was gonna go up against that. But we went a little bit further, we looked at things that, in the business zones, in the industrial zone, wouldn't be that, you know, obtrusive whatsoever at all. A lot of them are kind of newer businesses that we see emerging.
What we had seen in there, we met, and, you know, computer repair service or something was not allowed and protective insurance business, so I mean, I just...
It's old, boy, you make sense. I've seen you putting some stuff in the residential zones.
No, 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 no. This is it, right here, this is business zone, right here.
Business, business.
Under B.
Now, there's a new one that you've done, you've got businesses in the residential zones now.
No, what Dan's alluding to is that under the business zone, see the yellow line down here, the yellow line? That's business in your matrix. And in the business zone, you can't even have computer repair business, not allowed, not permitted, NP.
You're saying, what I've just handed you, that there's businesses permitted?
Add that into, what we wanted to do with this was walk like, talk like.
No, hold on, you, no, it was my understanding that this was a cleanup of the existing zoning regulations. That, I mean, for the time I've been on the board, zoning board, the planning board is working on cleaning it up. Well, I went...
More verbiage.
That's right. Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me finish.
Couldn't change it that much.
Well, hold on. I went through the existing ordinance, and there's no way in, under the business regulations in the existing ordinance, okay, prior to the matrix, which prohibits computer software services is non-permitted, that's not in, that doesn't say that in the current, in our current bylaws, right here, the current one, doesn't say anything about...
Insurance.
Not having a computer, you can't have insurance companies, you can't have a... It's right here, not permitted, have you read it?
It should be in there.
It's in here, yeah, right here. Computer application services in a business zone, NP, what does NP mean?
Not permitted. I hate to say it, some of these things got messed up.
Hold on, no, no, no.
They did, because they took it from Excel to Word.
Please, please.
But we're relying on what's in print, so...
This is what's printed, don't sit here and say it got mixed up.
This is what almost went to town meeting back in May.
Yeah, please, yeah, come on, don't sit here and start blowing smoke, Jim. Computer service services, not permitted, computer data storage, not permitted, computer networking, not permitted, computer telecom wireless, not permitted, contracted enclosed facilities, not permitted. This is in the business zone. This is in the B zone.
A computer repair service guy might be a guy that's, you know, loading software, troubleshooting, something like that. I mean, that's a white collar job, it's not industrial, that's not manufacturing, that's...
This could be Joe consultant with a laptop, and he's gonna come...
This is an expanded view, okay, of business. What we're trying to do is get the thing passed, because there are people that will vote against it.
I understand that, but if we pass it in the current form, I mean, this is 2016.
Shutting all the businesses down from coming in.
You can't have a computer consultant or repair business in town.
You can't have insurance company.
We had phase one, phase two, phase three.
My thinking is, once this passes, it's gonna disappear for twenty years, I mean, it's not gonna come back. People are gonna say we're gonna do this.
Can I just talk for a second? One of the problems everyone was having was that matrix. I think it would've went to town meeting fine if the matrix wasn't put in there. The matrix was put in there, when it was put in there, we didn't really know about it. Once the matrix went in there, we looked at it, they looked at it, and there was a lot of NPMPs. And they were worried, if it went to town meeting and that passed, now we're shutting a lot of the businesses from coming into Groveland. So that's why they put the brakes on, they said, let's meet, let's have this meeting, let's, you guys, you all do diligence, they'll do their due diligence, and let's reconvene.
You got three outs in there, you got retail large, retail small, and you got industrial.
What about service, business, service? See, I think we could cure the problem, right? If you had a purpose...
For the zone.
In each zone, and if you had a blanket statement to the effect that retail is designed as this, and this is the purpose of this district, and, you know, it's, we should include what's permitted, but not limited to. You know, you gotta have some flexibility within the zone, 'cause somebody might have a business that you didn't think of.
Well, yeah, that's why we wanted with like light manufacturing, that explodes.
Well, let's just talk about computer repair services, what's the objection to it?
In computer businesses.
What's the objection to me bringing my computer in, sitting on the counter and say, I'm having a virus, can you clean it? They says, pick it up on Friday, I got back on Friday to pick it up, in a business zone, it's not permitted.
We can put it in there if you want.
Jim, well, hold on, hold on, hold on, stop, timeout. Not, we can put it in there, that's what's in there.
I'm asking why was it excluded?
Why is it in there? It isn't that we can take it out, this is what you wanted the town to accept last April.
This could've been voted on.
Let me tell you, this thing is probably three times as large as what it really was.
I appreciate that you condensed it, but I think we're in the fine-tuning mode. If we can agree in concept that we shouldn't be so restrictive that you can't have...
What I wanna do is win the first round, which is nothing more than what the bylaw will look at, and then we go at it right away, adding in, changing everything.
Now, that's, that's not the way you do it.
No, we could make all the changes now, and then...
Exactly what the lawyers told us.
Well, we don't agree with the lawyers, then.
This guy right here is an attorney, and that's not the way you do it.
The lawyers will make more work for you, you know. Here's the deal, if you, let me just add to what you said, if this went to vote at town meeting, you're gonna get people on town meetings saying, what do you mean, I got a computer service company and I can't be in town? I sell life insurance, I can't be in a business district?
Are you a small retailer or a large retailer?
Why did you put that in there, though? Why did you put in that you can't have a, an insurance company in a business zone?
Right here, insurance agency, and this one, LBD C, permitted without...
It's not permitted in the business zone, in the B.
In this one, it is.
What is this one?
His revised.
Me and the building inspector went over.
Yeah, but that's, that's...
That, that, that wasn't, that's not where you presented to this, that wasn't, that's not what was gonna be on the...
That's not what was going to town meeting.
We haven't seen that.
As we heard, we started to change.
Okay.
Okay?
So we've been working off...
I think what they're saying, is this, I think what they're saying, this is almost passed through town meeting, and so if a guy came in and wanted an insurance company, he may as well forget it, don't even bother coming to zoning for three hundred fifty bucks. And you're out.
She has here...
Doesn't get it.
The lawyers.
So what he's saying is, what Jim's saying is, since this, this conversation went on here, and almost at the time we stopped it, I think what Jim's saying is, he's met with the building inspector and redone something again, that we all haven't seen, we haven't seen it yet, so...
Well, you should've seen it, because I gave it to Denise...
I haven't seen it.
Weeks ago. You know, we got, we got theirs this morning, we should've got this two weeks ago.
I haven't seen it.
We should've probably got this a few days ago.
Have you seen this?
Yeah, you know...
I haven't seen it.
You seen it, Dan?
No.
I think...
We're meeting, this is the best thing that's happened, we're talking.
Right, right.
Okay, because that wasn't happening before, don't forget, this thing started in oh five.
Jim, why can't we simplify this to have a broad category for each district?
I got no problem with it.
And, you know, everybody knows what retail is. We can say what's not allowed, you can't sell marijuana in the district. You know, you can put the what we don't want in a short list, but there oughta be a broad category of retail.
Right, if you have a residential area, residential's residential, we come up with a broad category of residential. We have business, and then we have industrial, simple, three different categories, or if it's four, whatever it is, we keep it simple. None of this NP and none of all this other stuff. Ultimately, if it's gonna go in residential, it may have to go before the zoning board for a special permit or whatever. So, I think what we need to do is try to get it simple for this go-around, and if you guys wanna turn around and make that broader, and we can go back at it again, fine, but to get this through town council and get this taken care of through the fall, you know, meeting, we're trying to get it taken care of, I think what Dan's trying to say, and the board's trying to say, if they can simplify it a little bit to get it to go, we don't have to be so fine-tuned about it.
I think if you look at the...
Go ahead, can I?
If you look at some of the suggestions that I made, were to try to lump things into a broader category, the bylaw already used a definition, business office, and so using that, and...
Get to get on work on this.
And I think maybe it would be...
You handle this more than we do.
Yes, I think that's probably true.
Certain parts in this bylaw, we handle exclusively. And we know where the, where the problems are with that. I was, I ran the board of appeals for a few years, I was on the board of appeals for sixteen years. I know what walks in that door every time, it's very, very different.
Well, Jim, hold, hold on, let me just say one thing. The concept of the matrix, and I'm speaking now as a former code enforcement officer, that's good, no doubt about it. But from our very first conversation out in the hall we had, I told you, it was too inclusive and it was too restrictive. And the problem with being exclusive is that all of a sudden, Dan comes up with an idea, says, hey, I wanna build widgets on, that fly into the night and light up, and I said, oh, wait a minute, ooh, not listed. So, six months later, or the following April, it gets taken up. There's no escape clause, and I told you that then, and I'm telling you now, and I agree with Dan, it's gotta have some type of way where the unnamed type of businesses can have a venue to come through, some process...
Even if it's discretionary, even if it goes for special permit. So if it's not listed here, you can still try on a special permit. But I think we'd have clarity here if you said, in each district, this is absolutely based upon your survey, what would, what you guys decide, this is what we don't want in town in this district. If you could clarify what's not to be permitted...
Anything that turns into what twenty-one E property.
If you, if you just, if you just take the...
Anything that turns, so anything that's a potential polluter.
Well, this, this is a...
There are other, there are other uses that have impacts that would be inappropriate.
But is that a reason why you exclude?
Taxpayers, local companies.
If you were to take the end, come on, if you were to take the case, if just take some of the cases that had to come before the town for litigation, you take the lady up on Main Street that was trying to put a candy store in her house, okay? So what happens is, I think what they were trying to do is, they were trying to fine-tune it to the point where they don't want this stuff happening all the time, on the same token, we can't make it too broad, it will have these problems. You've had people come before your board...
It can't be ambiguous.
I agree, and you have people come before your board, they wanna have an in-law apartment, and what's an in-law apartment? It needs to be clarified, our bylaw doesn't really state a good definition of an in-law apartment.
I think actually, in-law apartments, we're putting that to as a building inspector now, right?
Well, no, 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 no.
What I'm just saying, what I'm trying to say is...
It is, but, but some people think it's ambiguous, I happen to not think, because if you read it, if you read it, you can't have two...
You could read that stipulation two different ways. I looked at it one way, and you look at it another way, it's two ways you can read that one category, 'cause I went through it, and I read it my way, and your board read it another way, so I'm saying is...
Who won, Billy?
Your board won, I don't care, it's up to point. What I'm trying to say is, some of the stuff, and I understand what they're doing...
Glad we don't sit on a board of appeals.
Bill, Bill, you know, Bill, who's gonna do this now, though? Who's gonna do it?
Do what?
All these changes, who's gonna take charge of it?
Do the work.
Well, I, what I was...
Who's gonna do the work? That's the problem.
Right, I agree with you a hundred percent, and the problem is, is, do you take the paperwork that Casey's done, and you pass your paperwork to these guys, and they take a look at it and meet again? I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's a lot of work, I agree, I agree.
She put a line through it, and then she wrote another one.
Casey, what would it take to put, well, how much time and effort would it take? If we could plagiarize it from other towns, right, to put in definitions in each district? We need to start there, maybe we should look...
That's why we did.
Maybe we should look to the master plan for that and just grab it.
Well, you know, that was done, they started it in ninety-one, and...
But it didn't hit this document.
If you're not using a master plan, what plan are you using? What's it based on?
And if it's...
Never adopted anyhow.
Jim, listen.
You guys elected officials, so I mean, we gotta defer to you on some things.
Let me ask you again.
You did a survey.
I'm gonna ask you a question again. If it wasn't based on a master plan, what was it based on?
It's based on what it was, the situation that we've lived with since nineteen fifty-four, basically. It's a hodgepodge zoning situation.
But what were the changes based on? If you didn't, if it wasn't based on a master plan...
The changes were made on the survey that we sent out.
Okay.
We used a, another town, Mark Bobrowski, who wrote things like that, he was involved in it. Lisa Mead was involved in it. Woody Camet Engineering was involved in it too, but it was mainly from the survey, the master plan.
The survey you have...
The, the survey you have, in that survey, it says that in a business district, we do not want to see, uh, computer repair, insurance companies, is that in that survey?
Tom.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Ten or fifteen years, I don't remember now.
But it's important.
But can I, can I say something?
The question I'm asking is that, what's it based on?
It, it was based on other towns', uh, master plans, and with the knowledge of Mark Bobrowski and Lisa Mead. And there was another lawyer involved too in it. But, let me, let me get back to the whole thing that we need to do here. Heard, um, changing of the different words, they could mean different things or anything, that's simple and it's good. We need to do that, clarify that. Using the, uh, master plan for the acronyms and what the words that they use in the language of master plan, that's good. But no one ever worked with us when we started doing this. So, uh, the, so zoning rules, let me talk. Zoning rules and regulations, we couldn't get you people, not you people, but the zoning board to work with us. So what do you expect to come out of it, our side of it, and what we get from people? Now that we're starting to work on it, great, we'll listen to you, and if it makes sense to me, I'm gonna vote for you. So come in with us and work with us, go over every damn line that's in here that you wanna change. If you can present to me good knowledge of what's going on with it, and we research it and it works better, change it. But we need to work together, and we haven't been.
Okay.
Little board here, I mean, uh.
Alright, so hold on for a second, so Casey, you, Casey, you and Kathy, well, I can't speak for Kathy.
Right.
Would you be willing to get together with a couple of the guys on the planning board and have a few meetings to try and work with them? The more people you involve, the more confusion it's gonna get, it's more aggravating it's gonna be. So if we can put you two together, with two over there, one over there, whatever it takes.
Yeah.
You can go back to your board, talk to it.
I think that that would be very productive, um, I would only ask that you have the opportunity to review what I've done.
Right, right.
So that we, we're talking from the same place.
And they, they can review what you've done.
And I'd love to see.
Give us until September to start it up again.
Do you have a copy? If you're gonna try and get it done for, for the fall, um, election, you.
Do you have, do you have the, Jim, do you have a copy of that matrix, the new one?
So that, your board will take that?
You should have had a copy.
Can I ask a question about, I mean, i- i- within this draft, and, and we talked about it in our last meeting, and, and again, it's a subjective issue, but I wanna know how you arrived at it, I mean, i- i- you're not allowed to have, um, franchise businesses come into town, so was that part of your survey?
I understand where you're going with it, but.
It, I, it, some people may see that as changing the character of the town, but not for nothing. You know, if somebody wanted to bring a Starbucks in and they have, you know, uh, I mean, it, it's a, a capital investment there, it might be a good thing. So just to, caught blank say, oh, you can't have, you know, McDonald's coming to town, or you can't have, you know, a, a, a franchise. Why is that, what's the?
We had three different towns.
What's the public policy behind that?
Picking and choosing from them, what we thought would go in this town.
I just got a question, on the revised one, business industrial, animal clinic, veterinarian hospital, business, not permitted.
I, I think what's gonna happen at this point, we can sit here and go back and forth all night, you know what I'm saying?
Right, this is in business, it says not permitted.
I think we're.
Why wouldn't an animal hospital be? Are you kidding me, Waters Edge Veterinary?
We had one. It's a business zone, no, seriously, we had, we had one show up, it showed up on Gardner Street in a house.
Doesn't mean they, the, the, the what, the animal hospital, you could say to them, no, you know, keeping the dogs overnight, you can't have, but they could have the dogs come.
I know there's one on the square.
You know, so that we can go back and forth all night and say what the matrix says and what the matrix says.
This is a new one, Billy.
I understand that, but let's, they've given you the matrix.
Application services, business, not permitted on this.
They, they've given you that matrix.
This is, this is not, this isn't done, this isn't done, this is nothing better than what you had before.
Findings to them, let them work it over, we'll set up a meeting with you, Kathy and a couple guys, and work it out.
But, but, but.
We gotta stop bashing each other and work together and change it. Bring that up at a meeting.
We had more business than Groveland Square, we had Groveland Highway and all the other stuff than we do now.
To bash each other before we even sit down together.
Well, no, no, my point is.
Wants that, Spring Street to the bridge.
Let's throw Hanley.
I think what I'm trying to say, Tom, is they need to read what she's done.
Yeah.
You need to read what they've done, if you wanna meet again, as a whole board, meet again, I don't care, I'm just trying, like, like Bob just said a minute ago. There's a lot of work that needs to be done here, are you all willing to come in and, and, and do this all the time, you wanna do it as a whole board?
No, 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 but I, I'm, I'm really confused when, when Jim sits here and says that, that he wanted in, in April to have that approved. And then, well, then we're gonna approve, and then we'll, then we'll go through.
I understand, and we can go back all night long, but at the, next to him over the water, we're at a new point now, we're at a new point, a starting point tonight. That's been taken care of, it didn't get where it was.
Water over the dam.
That's what I'm saying, is we're at a new starting point.
It's like the guy last night said, he was gonna pour sheet rock.
Oh, we, we have.
Not a good public speaker, sorry.
Hand concrete, did you watch it last night?
No.
Bylaw actually went for the Board of Appeals for two years, this is back in oh five, oh seven. They never did a thing that, we didn't even talk to the lawyer Bobrowski at that point, guess, guess who wanted Bobrowski? His ZBA at the time, we act, we asked them, let, let that happen.
But, but Jim and Bob and.
You had, the selectmen wanted to use town council. That's why later on, they wanted town council to re-review what Bobrowski's firm had done.
But, but.
See what I'm saying?
Bob says that it was based on.
This thing, it's, it's gone into this.
Three or four different towns.
It's gone into this.
What's that got to do with Groveland's master plan?
I, 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 I think we might have to go back.
Going by the survey we sent out for the master plan, on some direction, we use that too, as far as the zoning.
And the master plan said that in a business zone, they.
No, stop pigeonholing little things like that.
Would you be able to?
Let's work together now.
I know, but that's not.
Stop butting heads.
I know, but that's not.
Just all handily, all due respect, I mean, would, would your board be receptive to have it a little?
I know I am.
Have broader categories of business uses in a st- district without being so.
We know, we know what's out there today in business, we don't know what's gonna be out there.
I understand that, but we, we had, we had a, a, a dog rescue that came before us on, 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 uh, a ZBA hearing, I don't know if you watched it.
Yeah, I did.
But, but they're in a concrete building, I mean, is, is anybody bothered by a barking dog?
Actually, they, they spent, they haven't even moved in yet, they spent two and a half months right now getting everything already.
We, we had a.
It's a business zone, what do you, what do you get about dogs barking, dog, you know what?
The only thing I'm concerned about as a border health is the dog poop on a hot summer day, right there.
But they, if you listen to the meeting, they're not gonna have dogs overnight there, they're gonna have dogs come in.
Two days.
Two days, and then they're gonna be rescued, and most of the stuff's gonna be in sadie.
But it's.
I know, I know.
Would you be able to share a copy of the study, or what you had, what was done before, so that we could take a look at it, to see that as well?
I'll get more copies.
I mean.
That'd be great.
It ought to be a document when we're done, that the vast majority of people in this town foresee as a vision of what they want this community to have and not have, I think it ought to be that document. You know, you're not gonna make everyone happy, but I understand what you say, and, and we could start there for an example, people don't want pollutants in town. So any business that's of high risk could pollute the aquifer, absolutely, this is a conservation town. Okay, it's conservation, uh, uh, minded, and that's fine.
But that also can be picked up to health when they go for their permitting and what, you know what I mean, that kinda stuff, and, and, and if you had.
Those restrictions could be imposed, so, so you're worried about what happens to the dog poop.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I'll be watching it. But, uh, what, what we had was.
The dumpster.
We had more than three or four hearings, we had hardly anybody, I think there was one the first night of the public coming to the zoning hearings, that were publicized in the papers, on the, uh, website, and on the bulletin boards, police and library. We didn't have hardly any participation at all.
Let me ask.
And none from the zoning board.
Let me ask you this, could, 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 could we?
I did comment comment.
Well, one time.
No, 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 but could we?
I'm, I'm going before you were even here.
Survey and send it out in the tax bill.
Why not?
But between the two boards, I'm sure we could, we're ironing this out.
Well, let me ask you this, could you have a survey with each type of district, send it out with, you know, which businesses do you not want, you know, in your district, in your district?
Uh, we have no money in our budget, but if you can take it from the, uh, lawn cutting or something, to, to pay for it.
Yeah, they're not mowing much.
We're not going to that subject.
Put it in what they did with the, the, uh, your thing, yeah, put it in with the light bill or whatever, that goes out there.
No, could we get an up?
Tax bill.
Could we get an updated survey for each district, cause people that are in those districts have more at stake, they got, they're skin in the game there. What do you want for your neighbor, you know, what, what do you want two doors down?
I think even Dan, even if you turned around and you just said you're gonna have the hearings that way, somehow, say you're gonna have a hearing on a certain date and people come in. I know you have hearings, a lot of times people don't come in, you showed up to the hearing, that was pretty much it, but, and, and, and maybe it was a publicized right, but, I mean, I don't think a lot of people care.
I just tweaked what they, she, she wants to do and get together and, you know.
And have, what do you call it, you call it, you know, uh, some sort of, uh, there's gotta be some flexibility clause within it, that if.
Well, as, as, as an inspector, looking at that.
When I, when we, when we were on the Board of Appeals, we were very flexible, okay? It's not the business, it's the individual.
But if you read, if you read this and you don't see it there, seems to me we have no discretion.
Under, under the.
You're right, it's two things under retail.
And I think that's a shame, cause you could have a great business coming in and it, while it's not on the list.
So let's take, let's take your board, Tom, and you guys.
Well, he, he, he just said that you can let your mind run, I, I mean, I.
Saying, within the definition of retail, which is broad, you could do lots of different things.
Jim, would you please just look at?
Restaurant's not retail.
That's the new one you have in your hand.
Yeah, look at all the NP's in here.
It's not in the definition of retail.
NP means not permitted.
Can you have a restaurant anywhere? In any of the, in any of these districts?
What, what?
You can't even make jewelry in a business zone.
Cause retail is the sale of goods, it's not, it's not, it's not food.
We put that in industrial because, and Bob can tell you about that, you get a lot of stuff that comes off of that and, and putting things together.
So, let me just say something, Tom, if you have that piece of paper in your hand, and you come up with one that you guys were gonna accept, and they came up with one that they wanna accept, you guys can, wait a minute, hold on.
It's not up to us to do that, the planning board's a planning.
My point out, but you won't let me get my point out. My point I'm trying to get out is, if you don't agree with, with, what they put before you, and you guys wanna put together a piece of paper that you agree with, and they have theirs, you guys can spend nights here, back and forth, back and forth, what's NP, what's P, what's?
No, no, but, but the, the, the bigger issue, Billy, is that it, it doesn't matter. I, I, I wanna know if, if, listen, if everyone in town come to me and says, we don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want this, we don't want, fine. But I'm, I'm trying to find out. Who came up with it?
We got people.
Where'd that come from?
Six hundred fifty thousand dollar house in their backyard.
If, if you do a survey, you're gonna do three months getting it prepared, getting it out, and waiting for it to come back, and then you're gonna need a person to put it together to get the percentage of what, who wants what and what, and you're talking next year anyways, people even.
You, what you really wanna do is try to take a, a swipe at it yourselves, okay, where you take two of them, two of us, maybe three or four of us, I don't know.
I mean, I, I think we need, if we have broad categories, and then you put your absolute not permitted, and we can agree on the non-permitted, narrow the not permitted, to the.
I mean, you gotta, you gotta have, have to understand, Dan, that we were working on this whole thing, okay, not just the uses. I mean, like I'm saying, the uses, it's, it's three times what it started with the lawyers. So, yeah, we were adding in stuff, we were thinking about what we used to have and what we, what it was like, I mean, I can tell you what used to be in the square, we used to have a pharmacy down there where the, uh, mortgage company is, we used to have a haberdasher, men's haberdasher. We had Swedish restaurant down there.
There was a Husfown too in nineteen sixty-two.
So, like I said earlier, it's.
It was?
I can go on.
But could those businesses come back under this model?
See, you, you're a hundred percent right, except that.
Come back.
This come back more restricted.
They could.
I didn't see it, I haven't seen it, and I, and I don't really care, I'm trying to get to the point, a starting point, if we can get two people from your board, two people from their board, they talk about, in the interim, you guys sit down as a board and say, what do you think, like Dan's talking about, he's talking about coming with a proposal, making it more broader. You guys get together, then your representative gets to them, they gets together with them, they talk it out.
Yeah, but, yeah, but this, tonight, okay, uh, tonight's not the first time that this has been discussed.
Been going on for years.
This has been going on, I mean, now, 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 Jim Freer knows that, that we've discussed this on several different occasions, and, and this is the new matrix that came back, and you can't even, in a business zone, wash a dog?
We gotta get past the impasse, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta log, we gotta log Jim here, we gotta clear the log.
You're right, my point is, what's it based on, you see, I mean, if, if it's, you, we can't just say, hey, I, we can't say, I don't think it's, I don't think it's incumbent upon the zoning board of bills to say that, we think this is allowed, this is allowed, this is allowed, that's not the way it works.
I'm, I'm hoping we can.
Is it Casey? Go ahead.
I take your point, Tom, but I think where we are with this bylaw, and where it's come from, and how it's developed, and the need to actually make.
Changes.
Changes to go forward, to implement a zoning bylaw that actually functions for this town to allow it to, to, you know, to protect the uses that it should protect and to allow businesses to go forward, I think the best we're gonna get at this point is a collaboration between the two boards.
It's not gonna happen.
And that a, that a, conducting a master plan study at this point is, is just not feasible, I think we need to work with what we have.
Fine, well.
And it.
We'll work with what we have, but.
And then in the future.
Is, it, for instance, a, a, a gas station, special permit, right?
Oh, you can't believe what's going into that stuff.
Just yes, we're in agreement on that, we're probably in agreement more than we're in, in disagreement, but, you know, computer repair, you'll concede that, we'll allow that. So if we could just go through the not permitted and then say, Jim, what, what's your objection to that, what's your beef with not having a movie theater in town?
Right, and it's like business, like business district express parcel pickup, not permitted.
Dan.
Yeah, why couldn't you have a, a, a UPS store in town or something like that?
We can put it in the industrial zone.
Dan, listen.
But why not in the business zone?
Like, again, we need to define what the context of a business zone is versus industrial zone, I mean, the, the natural thought is that industrial.
That industrial zone, if you look at the one that leads out to Georgetown one ninety-seven.
Trevor Way.
That comes back to the, uh, Chinese restaurant. You can do anything you want out there.
I think Casey said it, couldn't have said it clearer, you need the collaboration between the both boards to come up with this work, and, and, until then, you're not gonna get this done.
Goes over the hill.
Yep.
And, you know, it's, it's, you have to understand also parts of the town, we, we have a lot of problems with residential, there's a lot of residential starting up again. But it's going into the parts of the town, you don't have sewerage, you ain't gonna get sewers, cause it's going over, okay? The other part of it is, you don't even have water there.
No fire hydrants either.
No fire hydrant.
Forty percent of the town doesn't have fire hydrants.
Where we're going at this point, yes.
I mean, this isn't, this isn't the first town that doesn't have fire hydrants, I, I worked in, uh, Buxton, Maine, same size as this. Same, 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 same size as this, I'll ignore that. Same size as this town, sixty-five hundred, and what they do in residential constructions is they have these large, uh, tanks.[1703.24]
Ten thousand gallon tanks, you fill them full of water and the fire engine backup.
They have fi- fi- they have fire backups and, and, and that's, that's in the developments. That type of thing's gonna have to happen and it should come in this thing here. In, in areas that, that is not serviced by.
That's all through the fire department.
And sprinklet systems and things of that nature. You gotta have fire, fire suppression in it.
But I mean, but, but that happens, that.
We have some houses that were built that way.
If, 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 if.
If there's no fire hydrant, you gotta have a sprinkler.
I know, the, the, the fire chief wants to have nothing but that, out in the area where there is no water.
Well, they, they do have, they do have, uh, fire suppression systems, uh, that, uh, that a residential, uh, use come up. Residential, uh, water services and they can do it also with the same type of tank system with a pump system. You load the system, that can be done, but that's a building code issue. But, but you have, it'd be to sit here and, and say, wow, we, we got, now we're gonna have building. Can you imagine that? In the town of Groveland, Massachusetts, they wanna build a house. Wow. They, they, can you imagine, Jim? They wanna build a house. Oh, my God. They have sewers and, and they may have to have a well. And, oh, we can't have that.
I mean, the issue is people own property, they have property rights.
You want the tax dollar.
And they, and they wanna be able to use it or sell it or.
Every square inch of land in this town is for sale right now. It really is. That's the problem. There's only a few people that are gonna hang in there with what they got. That we've heard from. And it's, it's gonna have, it's gonna start. We've got another subject that's gonna go on, on the other side of the cemetery.
So, to get, to get to a starting point, do we agree that we're gonna?
Definitely what that she said, yeah.
Two people from the zoning board, two people or whatever from the planning board.
Two or three.
I mean, I'll, I'll meet with you guys if we could.
Yeah, I don't care, whatever. I mean, if you all wanna meet, go ahead and you all meet.
Yeah, Bob and Bob, I'll meet with you guys if something, you know, you're passionate about is not permitted then.
If you wanna pay a little extra money to come at night or something like that, it is Sam. Sam Jocelyn, he is just great to work with. He, he is, he's fantastic. I can't say enough of that.
I think the first.
And he'll cut through a lot of stuff for you because he knows what happens in other towns. He's not just Groveland and Newbury. He knows what's going on.
I understand that, but if, let's just say for instance that it's his idea not to have a dog kennel in town, cause dogs bark. I mean, it's not the building inspectors say that, whether or not, I mean, it's the people of this town that are gonna determine that.
Document first. You gotta come up with the right document.
Maybe he doesn't like dogs, I don't know.
I, I like Casey's idea. You, you gotta define what you want.
Right, you gotta come up with the right document.
Ask him what he has in the other towns, what the other towns these services, what do they have, you know?
He may provide some perspective that may be very useful, but I think that we should start.
In a residential or something like that, you gotta take into interest the.
I'm saying business don't.
Okay, just business.
Just business.
So, no residential?
No residential.
Okay, alright.
I'm with that. Residential it'd have to be.
With neighbors, you know.
Neighbors, maybe special permit and if no, the neighbors don't gripe, maybe you could let it in. But it, business only, but there's a need for that. I mean, you know, I, I, I know people that love having a pet. But they have to go to work every day and it's not fair to leave the dog all alone eight, ten hours a day. So, they drop it off at a doggy daycare. There's a demand for that service.
Computer idea because I fixed my kids and all my friends' computers.
You know, so business oughta have less restrictions on it than what's here. Residential, we protect the neighborhood.
If you.
We should define what a home oc, a, a home occupation is because we've seen that battleground here in town.
But the trouble, Jim, the trouble is, there's a lot of residential homes in the business district. That's what he is.
That's what I thought, yeah.
That's the problem with maybe the dog kennels.
So, the house within the business district's gonna convert to a business, but if it's in a business district, it seems like it's permitted, it's allowed.
But he's next, I know it, but he's next to homes too.
It's next to something, Bob. It, it's a business district right next to a residential district.
Someone's gotta be on the edge.
Yeah, no, 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 it isn't.
Someone's gotta be on the line.
This house is in the business district.
The things where you bring in buffering and setbacks.
There's a line to everything.
Greenwood is.
And I live right at one, so I can tell you.
So, you, in, in.
No, but I'm, just out here is business, but there's houses.
Right, exactly. I agree.
That's, maybe that's why he, they put it in the industrial.
So, we're saying, that's where you go back to the point of saying that you need a broader definition that you can work with. If you fine tune every little thing, now you're gonna get into that problem where, oh, wait a minute, I, I'm in a.
Thing is though, they might be in the business district, but how many houses down here have the parking if they really wanna do something? So, they go in front of the zoning board of appeals, they're probably gonna say, no, we're not gonna allow it. You got enough parking, not enough lighting.
But, but Jim, why wouldn't you add that? Let's say you have a concern about kennels, right? In a business district, cause they're on a, on the edge, next to a house. Why couldn't you just say that, that, it, it, it requires a special permit? But to say that it's just simply not permitted excludes it. I mean, you might have somebody in, in a perfect building and location. And it's not gonna be objectionable to any of the other, so, you know, why couldn't that be a case by case basis and allow that as a special permit?
What happens if you have a, you know, you.
It's what I've gone through before when I was on the board of appeals. We kicked off the, uh, the bylaw in the first place. The judge throwing the whole thing out.
It's the skip case, it, it, it violates it.
ZBA, this is prior to us coming on, on the board of appeals. We came on in eighty-nine, a whole new crew. But in eighty-eight, they denied, and this is where they got the dogs. They denied a permit to a guy who was manufacturing windows because of the noise. Well. It was the people right on the other side of the hedge.
Yeah, but you, you could solve those problems by closing your windows and doing some other things. You could have some sound, you know. Suppression systems.
That and they were still complaining.
You can mitigate those things.
You know, and we, we actually did that again in the later nineties down there and it's. I hate to tell you, it, you're never right.
So.
You're always wrong.
As far as the, as far as the zoning board and, and the planning board, there's papers here that they don't both agree with. The only way you're gonna agree with it, you gotta get together, you gotta sit down and you gotta get, hash it out.
I wish I, Bill, I wish I could find a place like this in Groveland, nothing around it.
No, no, I understand.
Put something into it, okay? In nineteen seventy, it's seventy-one. Settle on the planning board at that point and came up with a thing called Gateway and everybody said it wouldn't work. You know what Gateway is? From the Georgetown line to the Chinese restaurant. We had two businesses out there. We had an Exxon station where Nicole's is now and at the far end where you have the pizza place. That was an A-frame that served breakfast and lunch. That was it.
Okay.
And Valley Tree.
Are we gonna?
You can change things if you have, if you have a space to put it. And you know, when, when, if you look at that industrial that went along the border of Georgetown and behind Salem Street, that was a vast amount of it. But you wanna know what the problem was? Getting into it.
So, are you gonna turn around? Do you guys wanna have a whole board or do you wanna have a couple up in, a couple? So, you want a couple? A couple or a whole board? Couple?
I'd rather say the whole board's working.
I would say, I would say you, you, don't rotate in and out because I can tell you right now.
So, Casey, you in, we'll talk to Kathy, have Tom talk to Kathy and see if she'll work with you.
Kathy, Kathy will do it, she'll tell me.
Okay, so Kathy and you will work with the, with the planning board. You'll, you got their paperwork they've given you tonight. You're gonna give your paperwork to them.
Yes.
They'll look it over and then you guys can get together. In the interim, you can go back to your board and tell your board what you found, what, let them have their input on it. They'll do the same to their board and hopefully we can put this thing together.
Yes, um, if, like I said before, if we can get the study or master plan or whatever you have from, from that, that would be helpful as well. Um, and did we have, you were talking about the fall.
Twelve hundred dollars a copy. Get the monkey back.
I think we all agree.
Timing, i- ideas?
I think we all agree that in order to get this thing rolling, we gotta have the input from both sides to get, to get it rolling back and forth. And we haven't had that. Now, we're gonna get it, and we're hopefully gonna get this thing going. And I, and I've said to you before, Jim, I know you put a lot of time and effort into this and unfortunately Bob said early, who's gonna do all the work? You've done all the work. But these guys got the matrix and it was kinda go to town meeting and, 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 and I was in, you know, they showed it to me, it's like, if it went, we would've had problems. So, nothing's, nothing's done, no one, no one, no one got killed here. We can, we can work on it.
One, one thing, how many things are there besides the matrix and the, uh, words that you changed?
Um, there's a few other notes. I, I tried to leave most of the substance that truly just came over from the existing bylaw alone.
There's all sorts of things.
There's all sorts of things that should be changed, but, but.
We know, we know that, we know why, but what the lawyers were trying to do was they keep it as much as they could. Like the old bylaw. Some of the, some of the lang, the language was changed to clarify, said the same thing, same intent.
Yep.
But let me tell you, we, we did have some people off of the previous zoning board. Think that we changed everything. We did new intent and new meaning.
Yep, and I think that, that is, I think the global intent is to, to keep this in this. As close as possible to the substance of the existing bylaw at the same time fixing it where it needs to be fixed. So that it can be an operative document that can be amended going forward.
Denise told me this morning, she said, when she was before Swansky, every town meeting, every year. The two specials and the annual, they had one bylaw, one zoning bylaw, every one of those meetings. Okay, so that it didn't overwhelm them at that point. They could talk about one thing every time and got it passed.
But to go back to.
I hate to tell you, you might be four to five years the ones.
Jim, in, in, in a, in a town manager setup, we had, uh, in, in Brunswick, Maine. We, we had, if you looked at their zoning ordinance, you'd see revisions page after page, but they could be done in forty-five days. If someone come in had a problem when it, that it just didn't work, uh, through my application of it and say, hey, wait, this isn't working. We could correct it in forty-five days. And here it's a year.
That's the way it is in Massachusetts. That's how we operate.
That, that's why we, that, yeah, but, but that's why you have to be. That's why you have to be more careful. But listen, Jim, if you go to page forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, I wanna show you something. I, I, I wanna know, then I'm gonna ask you a question after you look at forty-eight. On page forty-eight and table nine point one point two.
Table nine, wait, one point two.
Forty-eight.
What are you looking at?
Eight point one.
Well, maybe I got, I got it before the, uh, it's not yours, I'm sorry. In, in the, in your revised, the one that you wanted to go to the.
What's section number?
It's section.
Section nine.
Nine.
Off Street parking. And it's the one that you wanted to go to the, uh, the town meeting in April. You look at table nine point one point two. Home occupation. Parking space required. One per non-resident employee. Well, you know what? Home occupation cannot have a non-resident employee.
That's because, well, the lawyers wrote that, yeah.
Well, yeah, but wait a minute, hold on, hold on.
We got it correct, we know that.
Jim, you, you, you presented this to the board, a selectman to go before the town people and it would've got approved. And, and.
And it would've had no effect, but.
Huh?
And we've agreed to.
I know, what, what is this? What, you stalled again, Tom? I don't think it should go any further than this. Well, see, that's your opinion, Bob. We agree we're gonna meet and then you bring up another, then you bring up another case. You got some more in there?
Yeah.
Well, you know.
It sounds like you're trying to belittle them, you know, and you don't need that.
I don't know who, I, I don't know who did it, I'm just saying. I don't like it, I don't wanna hear it. I don't like that you, that you, that you're spending all this money and it's not correct.
Alright, so, so with already.
You didn't come to the meetings.
Exactly.
One of the ones that didn't come.
It's your fault.
Telling you right now, you were one of the ones that wouldn't come.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Alright, we're not gonna sit here and go nitty picky all night.
But he brought it up.
Here we go, he's been waiting for this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
We, we put the brakes on through the warrant process. They agree that we would work on this and make further revisions. Have some other po- public hearings on it and, and I made the statement there and, that, you know. It's time for people to get involved. There's speak now, forever hold your peace. We could get it to a point where we bring it back at special town meeting.
Wait, don't, just say, all we're gonna do is start an argument.
I'm not starting an argument.
If, if we could get to a point.
Hold on, I was told I didn't come to the meetings, okay? I didn't get emails. This is my email address right here. I did not get invited. That's my email address, okay? And I didn't get emailed. So, don't sit here and tell me I didn't come to meetings.
You didn't come to the meeting.
You didn't, you don't hear anything that's going on?
No, I don't.
The only thing we know is what Denise tells us in email addresses.
The, the past is the past as far as I'm concerned.
The past is the past.
We, we, we.
Let's go forward.
We pumped the brakes, stopped the warrant from going to town meeting. I had problems with it. The board of selectmen said, you know what? We agreed while he was there talking on behalf of your board. And, and we agreed we'd work on it through the summer, get it to some rough draft form to be presented at the special town meeting. I mean, that's, that's my, my intention. I'm willing to work on it.
Done their work.
To get it back to the town.
Dan, they've done their work, they've done their work and here we are and we said we're gonna have this meeting and we're here. So, we're gonna move forward.
And who knows if we need to tweak it some more, we bring it to town meeting in May, but let's try to get something to special town meeting.
We got something in place for these guys and.
Why don't they set a, a time right now?
Do you guys wanna set a time?
It'll have to be in September because I, we've got two guys, myself and, uh, Wally. We're, we're gonna be out in, in August, I can tell you. Yeah, we know that's happening. Bobby's going in for surgery. And, uh, he's gonna, he's gonna be away from it for a while, so.
That's that, Bob. Not me, I.
Yeah, well.
We don't know what's gonna happen.
September, September, so I mean.
That's fine. All I'd ask is in the meantime that the information be exchanged so that independently we can be thinking about it, so that when we reconvene.
By all means, start writing.
Well, and I, I need the information from you all as well from this, the past study, so.
And, and do you guys want, as far as your board, do you want the information to go to you or do you want it to go directly to her? Oh, it's like, you're giving her the.
Or they can give it to, uh, Julie and Julie will get it.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, let her feed it out and they'll do the same on their board. They'll have someone get the information.
Julie, that way we can all get CC'd on it.
Each person gets the information, one person gets the information.
Yeah, get it, get it to Julie. Julie will, will forward it over and then.
And don't be surprised if you don't catch everything. I hate to say it, what, what, what it does to your eyesight.
No, but.
Okay?
I, I know firsthand.
I'd like to read a copy.
And it's really just trying to get it to a better state.
They have to, you're on the board.
The lawyer stuff was on fun, fun size, you know, what's going on. And our previous bylaw was a different font.
Make sure it goes to Julie and she CCs all members.
On, make sure it goes to Julie and CCs all members.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, you, you wanna give you guys two? You have, the other guys don't, aren't gonna know what this meeting was all about. We can try to bring them up to a restaurant.
Yeah, they could.
Do you guys think when you, you have this meeting, do you wanna have it with the, the three, the BOs you, in these two committees or you wanna try and do it yourself?
It, it'll take a while, but you need to hash it out.
Probably just us for a while.
So, when, when you need it, then you.
Yeah, it will, I can guarantee that.
But doesn't make, it doesn't look like we're gonna make the fall.
I, I mean, even, even with, if we get a product ready to go, I, that's why I wanted to put Sam into it. Because he had some definitions that he wanted to put in.
So, at one point we'll have to get him involved.
Load this thing, just understand when you load it, you're gonna have some bluebirds that are gonna come in and say, look what they did. This is not what we had. Okay, there's an argument there.
If you've talked about it, they've talked about it and Sam's been involved, the bluebirds can come in, but, you know what? You know what I'm saying? You've already had your conversation and you've done the due diligence, you've done the right thing, so you can educate them at that point.
I can.
Well, they can, you all can.
There are snowbirds.
Right, right now it's no dogs allowed, so I object to that.
Can't wash a dog.
I just got a new puppy, so I'm happy. I like dogs, you know?
Bill, one, one quick thing on in-law apartments. What I see when I watch some of these meetings, you have to know that an in-law apartment has to meet the requirements of a board of health. I've been, we used to get in this town for twenty years, people modifying their septic systems in the middle of night. And on weekends and stuff, you cannot modify a system to put an extra bedroom and make an in-law or whatever. Unless you get permission from the board of health and they were doing it for illegal for years. So, before you contemplate changing the in-law, make sure you know all the rules.
Well, they should be going to you first anyway, right?
They're supposed to.
Yeah.
But they don't.
No, there's, there's so many problems.
And they have to renew it every year, right? Or no?
No, it's, it's impertuity until that person dies.
Or change of ownership on those.
It's almost like you see some of these very small lots in the rural parts of the town, you see them doing a tight mix.
They're making apartments out of carriage houses and things like that.
Once a month, you see it happening.
Okay, so, we're all good? We at a, a good point where we can move forward? So, we can basically adjourn the meeting then. And, and what else I really wanna say with?
Also, what I'd like to say is, the board of selectmen on the next, um, year's, uh, budget. We should still look into a town planner.
Right, I agree, yep. And why, why we're here, just, just, I mean, we had this coming for us already.
Cost sharing.
And I agree, I agree.
Who's budget?
The town planner that's gonna get, not on the payroll or they're gonna get a percentage of what they do?
Well, you know something? I think it's come to the time, in, in the town of Groveland, we do need a planner. I do, I think we do. I think that we don't, not too many people are signing up for committees and what have you. And I also think we need to have a conservation person in, in, in the town as well because we need to have someone in here, you know what I mean? Because we need to have someone in here, you know what I mean?
And you often can combine that position.
Town planner doing some other function.
Well, we've already approved for conservation to get one.
Or you get another town planner.
So, they're looking in, in.
Like Sam is, you know.
When we approved it, they weren't gonna go for the planner with it.
Realistically, what you wanna do, you wanna have that person take over the master plan.
Yes.
You wanna have that person take over the bylaw.
Yes.
Alright, I mean, we're down to four people.
Right.
Now, there are certain things in, in the bylaw that are special permits by the planning board. We have to have at least four out of the five those, we don't have five of those in the positive, to pass it. And there are, there are some things, I mean, conservation subdivision design, we may give one. And I can tell you right now, that, that can be positive in some cases where there's sewerage. If you put it where there isn't, and there ain't gonna be, it's a disaster.
Why I have you guys here, do you guys wanna come before the selectmen and discuss it with, for a town planner?
Sure.
I think it would probably be a good idea.
I mean, we're, we're a board that saves money. We don't spend.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying.
We're turning money back every year.
You need to have the conversation if we're gonna try and get it done.
Yep.
You guys are the planning board, so.
There is certain.
Are you looking for part-time?
A lot of money.
Part-time.
Well, I already know they were, when we, before, they were talking about, Sam said Newbury.
Why can't, doesn't, doesn't the place over in, in Hayville have it? Don't they have, uh, people to come around and do a part-time?
The Merrimack Valley plan? They may.
Well, you get certain, you get a certain amount of money.
They don't, they don't have any.
Not the one that leaves there. I know, we were talking to Sam, and Sam said that some towns around here had people for twenty hours that worked in their towns, and we might be able to talk to them. So at the time, I know they were talking.
It's gotta be that. Cause, cause I, I know towns would do that.
Yeah, they do. I mean, we already, he already hit the head. I think West Newbury.
We don't have anybody that. Specs, a full-time person, specs, septic's and everything. Might we have, Bob, who used to have years ago?
Yes, my health agent does all the inspections on everything.
Who does?
The health agent.
My health agent, you ever catch him?
Yeah.
She does the, and food and establishments and Title Five and septic systems. She does all the inspections on that. She's certified.
She's part-time, right?
You wanna know what Title Five's doing?
She, yes. Fifteen hours a week. They cut her from thirty. And I was against it, but two other people on my board outloaded me. Because they were under pressure from someone else. So, I'm, I need more hours for her.
I think we used to have a full-time one, didn't we?
No, thirty hours.
Yeah, was, remember the old guy that jumped, Bob? Hey.
I remember four.
Yeah, um, and the lady that lives down the street here, she went to somewhere else, I forgot her name.
Elaine.
Elaine.
Oh yeah, Wasne.
Wasne, yeah. She was thirty hours.
Yeah, and, uh.
That was back when I built my house in ninety-six, she was thirty hours.
Right up Yosters.
Yeah, yeah.
What's his name?
Yeah.
His, his, his sister.
Just to give you an idea what Title Five is like, in a thirty thousand square foot zone, where you do not have sewerage, you do not have water, they're on septic, they're on wells.
He worked for the gas company.
The lots are now fifty thousand square.
He had another house right up by this.
He has a Title Five. The size of these septic fields, okay, are about the size of a football field. You go into the back part of the town where it's one acre, lots are showing up seventy thousand square feet. Again, it's Title Five. That's why my biggest fear is, a lot of these houses that are built into the back part of the town, no water, no sewerage in sight. Twelve thousand five hundred square feet. They got a well, they got a septic tank. I don't know what they're gonna do.
Well, Jim, let me tell you, I'll tell you what they're gonna do. The, 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 I worked in a project where we, where we took overboard discharges from an area. And, uh, you can actually purify the systems to a point where you can drink the water. Now, it costs money to do it, but it can be done.
I'll let you do it.
It's through aeration and two septic systems, and it can be done. It's pretty sophisticated, but.
Yeah, but the guy doesn't wanna remortgage his house for a hundred grand.
I understand. But, but you just said that, that there's gonna be a problem. Well, the problem is, can be rectified with, uh, with technology, that's right. Today's different, different game.
Well, that's gonna be state mandated.
What you, what you can end up with is a price tag. And they just have to pop it every month, if not more.
On a different subject though, Valley Screw. My next door neighbor works for a company in Newport that writes grants to clean up brownfields and things, and they don't charge any money unless they get the grant. Then they get a percentage. And, uh, I know that's, I saw up there, and it's like Chernobyl now. You can't go in there unless you have hazardous suits because of the mold that's growing. Never mind, they tricycling onto the building. But, uh, you might be interested, I can get her a company name.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Definitely.
Yeah.
That's another thing a planner.
Have her, have her, um.
Apply for grants.
Give us.
Companies send you a letter?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Alright.
The outside of that property's clean. It's the interior.
Yes, no, I'm well familiar with it. I got all the information. Over three thousand pounds of.
Why would we wanna get involved in touching that thing?
Well, if you can get a grant.
Once we get involved touching that thing, we're gonna own it.
Exactly.
We don't wanna own it.
But if you can get a grant to cover everything.
We had that thing.
To own it, to grant up.
Probably what comes with it is agreement, a covenant from the state that they won't pursue enforcement against the town.
Federal government had it as a super fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't wanna get involved in taking it.
Took over in two thousand eleven. They're not gonna keep it forever.
Right.
The plume's receding, but it hasn't receded all the way. You got too many faults in the bedrock. Every time it rains, it moves it. I'm well familiar with it.
Sounds great.